...services and we will be discussing the successful child and youth policy team overview. And I'm going to turn it on, turn it over to Dr. Dockery.
So I have to admit when I met with Mr. Stork and Ms. McLaughlin that I confused them greatly. So I'm going to start over with that conversation. And Mr. Stork asked something very important. And this was the piece that I think I was missing. What is the ask of today? And I think that really helped me to think about how I, what, why are we here? So we are really here to provide an overview of the purpose of this team, to identify the work of the management implementation teams, and to highlight critical areas of progress. But there is a document that has some ask that went to the Board of Supervisors, and it has money and it has things. And so it's very easy to confuse what this is really. And so what SKIPPED has done, and I'm going to introduce everybody that's going to be talking today, is it's allowed us to formalize work that was already going on, but put it together to make more strategic decision making around our youth, so our child and youth decision making. And so today to talk about that, we have Mary Ann Penarelli, who sits on a lot of the work teams, Jane Lipp, who's joining us on this team, and Jesse Ellis is here today from the county. And I'm going to ask him to come up when we do questions at the end, so he can join us then. He is our partner in many things at the county, and so thank you for being here, Jesse. So when we look at some of the decisions that have been made since 2009 to present, there have been many cuts to things that impact our youth. There have been cuts at the CSB, the Community Services Board, to adolescent health services. There have been cuts in, in many places that impact our kids. And so the work of all of the work teams is to say, how do we work more effectively and efficiently to get good outcomes for services because they cross over and impact families and resources in our community? So I think Jesse first convened a large group. We identified at the beginning that there would be two school board members, two Board of Supervisors members, people from the county, people from the schools, and community members. And those people were invited. And Jesse led us on a session where, several sessions, where we looked at defining the vision and the mandate of what this work of this team would be. And if I have to look back at some work that we've done previously, this had happened with some large task force around gang prevention, when there had been joint work teams on the county and the schools to do something around critical issues. And we were looking at this as a way to look at the work that had, was already going on around key issues. And then this real mandate was to, you know, become more efficient and effective with our existing resources to reach the outcomes that you see on this slide. So the members currently on this team, you will see here from the schools and from the county government. And then these are people from the community that represent the schools minority oversight, student achievement, the early childhood sector, a faith-based sector, families, a healthcare sector from Inova, nonprofit and philanthropy sector. So individuals from each one of those areas were chosen to sit on this board. There is a very rich website that you will see in your, in your documents that you can go to. All of the minutes are posted, all of the presentations that we've had in the last year, all of the resources related to this work are posted there for any member of the community to see. So the history of this is that we wanted to build upon cross-school, county, and community efforts to increase efficiency and coordinate limited resources. We wanted to share data and develop measurable outcomes. And we wanted to increase strategic planning incorporating national models for collective efficacy. So one of the things that the group has been doing is looking at the STRIVE model that Cincinnati or other groups have used to align resources in working on community efforts. And that work is ongoing at the same time that the management teams have started their, or continued their work, I should say. So I'm just going to briefly highlight the chartered teams that have been working. And then we'll really go into a little bit more detail about the recommendations that were made in year one for those teams. And then we'll look at year, our upcoming year, and then answer questions about this. So our early childhood team has been working. I have now learned to say the DDEPT team has been working. I almost learned to say it, Mary Ann. So that's the Disproportionality and Disparity Elimination and Prevention Team. The chartered team also include Behavioral Health for Youth Team. And this also added a system-wide prevention coordination within that team. And we also included the work of Opportunity Neighborhood because this was a joint schools and county that we needed to look at one model and evaluate it before we decided to use it in other places. So the early childhood recommendations that came about last spring were to create a learning network, network of quality early care and educate, education programs that promote school readiness by expanding the neighborhood readiness teams and providing onsite job for providers, and also expanding the Virginia Preschool Initiative and the participation in the VQRIS improvement system. And that is the system that looks at quality of the daycare and private provider settings that we have. So most of the recommendations that came from the early childhood were around increasing quality in the county daycare programs. And also the neighborhood readiness teams, those were now assigned to all of our Title I school regions. So before, we did not have one in every place, in every Title I school, so that, that really impacts the birth to age five pipeline, where the teams are working on getting kids enrolled and getting them in access to all of the resources in early childhood before they reach the school system. We also are looking at a comprehensive early childhood data system. And this is really important because you know that when we come and report to you and we look at, we know the outcomes from CSEP kids with our own kindergarten. We don't have anything comparable to look at what happens to the other kids, the other 12,000 kindergarteners that are coming into our system. And we did work with the state on writing an early childhood grant, the county and the schools, with the preschool money that the federal government is offering. And that is a requirement of those, of those, of that grant is that we have a data system to track the kids coming into our kindergarten program and looking at the outcomes in the different programs. So Mary Ann is going to touch on the work of the Disproportionality and Disparity Elimination and Prevention Team.
So the DEPET team is also sometimes referred to as a racial equity team. It is looking at trying to establish racial equity across a broad variety of settings. This particular group, the SKIPPED focus is on children and youth, but the team focuses on a larger, broader set of things, including HR practices, I mean, a large, broad set of different practices. But in reporting to the SKIPPED team, the focus is on things that were about children and youth. What I'd like to highlight primarily about that is that they came forward with the recommendations that you see there. And we have moved forward at this point with trying to align with a national organization that is addressing these racial equity issues, and also piloting a data system that would look at issues across various settings. So from the school system standpoint, those are primarily things that we have already, test scores and children coming in ready for, from a literacy standpoint, coming in ready to kindergarten, those kinds of pieces of information that we have. But other members of the team, which goes across all of the county agencies, would be putting in information about birth weight. They'd be putting in information about inoculations. They, so it's a broader spectrum of looking at disproportionality as it impacts. So we'll also have information about involvement in the juvenile justice system, for example.
So they are actually very envious that we have more data and longitudinal. And so looking at systems that we can use together is also important for this. You want to talk about the behavioral health?
Sure. So the Behavioral Health Group kind of combines a variety of different work that was going on, including a Partnership for a Healthier Fairfax came out with a variety of recommendations. And again, the Behavioral Health Group has been looking at how those things affect particularly children, youth, and their families. So the, the recommendations that they came out with were to implement system changes, particularly around information sharing, so that we have kids who are served by multiple agencies, so we can be a little bit more efficient about that. And then a continuation of our implementation of a systems of care approach, so that your prevention work and your early intervention work is systematically organized, so that you are, you know, feeding into more intensive levels of service in a sort of systematic way. And that, again, families don't have to tell their story over and over again to multiple agencies, but it kind of comes in in a more seamless way. So thus far, the behavioral health recommendations have been focused primarily on how we can implement a process of accessing services for students who currently are not served by CSB, who don't have very serious problems, so that they would be served through the Comprehensive Services Act, but who have problems that have been identified by the schools as being too significant to be dealt with in a school setting. And therefore, we're making a referral to a private group or to someone, but for many families, they don't have insurance, they don't have other things that they would need to access that. So we're in the process of building contracts, et cetera, with providers who would be taking money from, money which was allotted by the Board of Supervisors. There's about a million dollars that was allotted by the Board of Supervisors to go to building a better service system for those kids.
And those are the kids that are on a waiting list, right? So that was really where we were, we don't, we don't have a waiting list. If you come to us, we take you in and enroll you in school. But for these services, they were getting in a continuously longer waiting list. We have a shortage of providers. And so then, this is kind of that level where this money would go to private contractors who could provide this and shorten the waitlist during this time. Does that make sense? So those are the teams that have been working. And we, the work that's coming, all of these teams will continue to work. But we know in this next year that we plan to expand the scope of the early childhood team, to add probably Mark Ginsburg at George Mason, and help look at a five-year plan for serving our students. Now, you all will be talking about that as you look at the strategic plan. And what's the right word to use? All students in universal preschool or targeted students? We know that we're getting pretty close to getting our four-year-olds who meet the poverty qualification for Head Start. But that's not all of the four-year-olds who need preschool. So that's where we'll be looking at what that means and how do we roll that out? So if we look at our Head Start waitlist, and if we look at, most of them now are three-year-olds on that waitlist. But that doesn't, you know, that they, we still have students, children in our community not getting childcare or early childhood education. And we also have students that fall in the cracks between the threshold to, to qualify for our Head Starter CSEP programs or our subsidized programs in the community, and they're at home or in a substandard program somewhere. So that is a focus that will be coming up next year. And Dr. Lipp will talk a little bit about the next area that is of mutual concern on both sides, and that is attendancy and truancy.
Terms, can you hear me now? Sorry. Attendance and truancy are really national issues, and our administrators continue to be very, very concerned about this area. And in working with the courts, we've really learned that the court system is no longer taking many of these students before judges in terms of having attendance or truancy issues. So we're back on what can we do to address the issues and to support the schools. We also have a limited number of attendance officers, and while they work with the schools...
That would be 15 for 185,000 students, just saying.
Thank you, Dr. Dockery. Limited number. And along with attendance and truancy, they're also working on things like residency issues. You know, do all these students live in Fairfax County? Or are they coming from Loudoun County or Prince William County? And so they have other things on their plates. And so we felt that we needed to come forward this year and really try to work with the court staff and see what we can do in order to address these issues. Now, the SOSAs are systems of support positions in our schools are starting to work on this, and they're doing some case management and some work with students and families in the schools. But we feel if we can come together with the court staff and really try to develop a plan, maybe that is something that we can continue to address, since attendance and truancy continue to be issues for our schools.
The positions that were added at the high school level have been really doing a lot of work, getting a lot of training, but working with kids. And they are finding that attendance and truancy are one of their most common things that they're dealing with. We know that some high schools have even created dean of students positions just to work on this, but attendance and truancy are impacting. And our officers in our schools do what they used to be told to do to prepare packets to use the judicial system to act upon this. But the judicial system has found that that's not effective, and they're looking for a way to do other things that would have better outcomes for the kids. So it's a, it's an area of huge concern for high schools right now. Also, current, next work, we're going to be, I think it's at the December work session, have a presentation on race equity that the Board of Supervisors has already had. And we're going to have upcoming report and recommendations from Opportunity Neighborhood. So that is the overview of what SKIPPED is, and really our ask today was if we come before you to understand the work, so that you can add the SKIPPED meetings, which occur about monthly, to your regular updates about work that's going on in the county. And I'd like to ask Jesse to join us for questions.
Okay. Board members, obviously, since we're running 30 minutes behind, let's try to focus on the most pressing comments and questions you want to ask at this time, knowing that we'll then be following up with a work session in December, to really focus in on what the SKIPPED team is asking of the school board and our partnership with the Board of Supervisors on this. So questions? First, I'd like to go to Dr. Garza. She indicated wanting to speak.
Mine's real fast. Who, who's making the presentation with regard to the presentation on race equity?
That'll be, oh, sure. The presentation will most likely be from some county staff that have been leading that Disproportionality and Disparity Prevention and Elimination Team. Karen Chabon, who works in the Department of Neighborhood and Community Services. Marlon Murphy, who's with our Juvenile Court System. And Carla Bruce, who's also with Neighborhood and Community Services.
I have Mr. McElveen.
Just real quickly, from our last Joint Budget Committee discussion, we did talk about using the SKIPPED recommendations as a starting point for some joint board work in the future. So that's just something the board should be aware of. I know we'll be seeing those final recommendations soon. And then, secondly, do you envision this, the attendance and truancy piece potentially to have policy ramifications for us?
It could. I think the biggest thing is trying to come together and figure out what it is we can do to, to address the issues. Since we're not really using the court system as a negative or a consequence, what can we do proactively to be able to move forward? I mean, I think having the SOSAs as a resource has been great, and really working on some strategies, also looking nationally. What's been done, as I said, it's, it's an issue nationally. I mean, we're not the only ones that have it. But what can we do together as more support for students and their families with it? So it could eventually, but the committee's really just in infant stages for this year.
I, I would agree that we don't, we don't know. And the preliminary discussions that we've had with Bob Birmingham from Juvenile Courts has been that we know that if we're not using the courts, then it will have some policy changes on their court side, in terms of which kinds of cases are deferred to other interventions, and then it will, for standardization. And it also will have some ramifications for us, because they feel that the student attendance office positions were created and are held by people who currently perhaps are more school police, as opposed to truancy officer. So not all, but some. And so it really is, it, it will have ramifications on how you develop and define those positions.
I really appreciate you taking this on, because I've been hearing from principals for several years now that this is a huge issue.
That's right. And I think we've done a lot of trainings with the SOSAs, too, so that they can be effective in case management with families and with students, and really working with staffs. And so we did a lot of training this fall with those positions, or those people in those positions. So we'll see where it goes. But we're really hoping that the county can help us, too, with some positive interventions in terms of addressing that issue.
Before I go to Ms. Darren Kofax, I'm just a little bit mindful that sometimes the audience might not know some of our acronyms. So SOSA...
Systems of Support.
And they do...
And they work individually with students on discipline, attendance, positive behavior intervention. They work with teachers. They work with the sub-school principals, the assistant principals, and the principals. It was a system we put in place. Sometimes if a student needs to be in school suspension rather than out-of-school suspension, they're with that person for the day, and they're coordinating their work with the other teachers and things. So we're really using them, depending on the school, you know, and what the needs of the school and the students are, in different roles and responsibilities that way.
And those positions are, came into our schools when, which year?
In the summer.
Yep. So I wanted to make sure people understood this. We're talking about brand-new positions here.
Brand-new positions.
In all of our high schools, not our middle schools.
All of our high schools.
All of our high schools.
Now, we did make an agreement with middle schools, and some have coordinated that if they have a student who needs an in-school suspension day or whatever, and it's close, and they can work out the transportation, they have been using that as an, as an option, as opposed to out-of-school suspension.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we had that clarification. Ms. Kofax, followed by Ms. Strauss.
I just wanted to thank the SKIPPED team and thank all of the board members who were on it for making me realize that we had not had a report out on, and I think it's important, because you are taking on a robust set of issues, ones that are difficult at times to, to talk about, but ones that need greatly to be talked about. I'm glad to see in December we'll have Opportunity Neighborhoods also, because I think that's another area where the board is not aware of all the good work that's happening. I can tell you, when I started out on the Childcare Advisory Council, I think we started out with four school readiness teams. So to know now that they have expanded into every Title I school and the benefit that that brings to that community, that's tremendous. So we are making progress, and, and I look forward to, you know, this was an overview, there's so much information here. I encourage my colleagues to, to look at this, ask these ladies questions as we move forward to a broader work session in, in December. But thank you.
Ms. Strauss?
Since Jesse is here, and the coordination, CHINs petitions and all of that, is that being looked at as part of the truancy issue? I mean, that's another entry point.
Yes, and I think part of what Dr. Lipp has been talking about is that it is less frequently now than it was in the past, that there would be sort of a CHINs position, petition, that's a child in need of supervision petition. What they are trying to do is, is go from a more preventative standpoint. One of the things that happened was that the state legislation changed. There used to be state legislation that said after X number of days, it was a requirement to seek a petition. And the state legislation changed so that it said that after a certain number of days, there should be a cross-disciplinary team that met to discuss the needs of that child and family and try to get to root causes. So the, the state approach had changed. We in Fairfax County had already sort of moved to doing some of that, but this gave us a little bit more latitude in terms of being in compliance with the law and still doing what we needed to do. There are a couple other resources that informally have already started moving to help to some extent. Students who have probation officers, for example, the probation officer is working more closely with keeping track of what the student's attendance is like. And then we have a program called School Court Probation Officers, who are teachers, guidance counselors, various people in the schools who get a stipend to monitor school behavior for students who are at some level of probationary. And there, the numbers of kids on probation have been dwindling. And so one of the pieces of conversation that we have been having with the courts is can we use those positions and use even the probation positions in a more preventative way? So that that would just be another group of people who could help do a little bit more of the wraparound, working with the families and, and obviously, the School Court Probation Officers working with the kids. So I think, as Kim said, this is just starting, this conversation, but part of SKIPPED is to try to see whether we have resources that could maybe be used in a slightly different way and get better outcomes.
And you just said that actually the number of, of young people on probation has declined.
The number of students who are referred to courts has declined. The number of students in the Juvenile Detention Center has declined very significantly from about 190 as the daily rate, I don't know, maybe five years ago, to about 37, 38 being the daily rate now.
Really?
And again, a lot of this has been joint efforts. And as you're aware, we're now continuing with that, with a restorative justice joint effort between police, SROs, and the schools, to try to continue to divert kids from those, those sort of things. So yes, there's fewer kids in, on probation, fewer kids at boys' probation are the various court schools, and fewer kids actually in the Juvenile Detention Center.
That's significant. And SKIPPED team, as, as member of the county, we've not seen that, that data yet, so that's...
Right. So that will be part of what is coming forward as we're looking at this in general attendance issue, but some of the issue is that they overlap. So when kids have really bad attendance rates, we're not talking about the kid who's, you know, missed a couple days. We're talking about the kid who is 20 days out of school, 30 days out of school, often...
After the first month.
Often have also problems in the community while they're out of school.
Right. Great. All right. Thank you.
So one of the things that I wanted to make sure was, I think, clear for the board is that next month, when we're talking about the school board presentation on race equity, up until this point, as Dr. Dockery, you outlined for us, the work that's come before SKIPPED is from the different working groups. They come with these recommendations and present and say, here's, you know, in our working group, we think this is how we could be doing better work across multiple agencies. And then the SKIPPED team that is in that room, and collectively, it's typically 30 people or so around the room, you know, we raise our hand and vote on whether or not we agree with those recommendations. They take it back to those working teams, and they just, you know, continue on doing this really valuable collaborative work. But what's different for next month is that, as I, my experience has been, this is the first time now that, that one of the working groups has come forward and said, you know, now we're talking about something at the policy level. We're looking at where we need the Board of Supervisors and the school board as elected officials to really, you know, decide if you want to take a position on something that, at, at that policy level will impact our operations. And so I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that what's going to be different about next month is really, truly for the first time, where SKIPPED is saying, it's not just the working groups and the policy team, but now we're asking you all to come, to make, to decide whether you want to make a very substantial decision. Dr. Dockery, would you... Dr. Dockery, would you capture it that way in the time you've been on the team, that this is kind of the first time we're really asking the boards as, to, to take a definitive position on something to then lead the work that's coming out of SKIPPED?
Well, I think that, yes. So, I think that what, what you're seeing is that we know that that one topic impacts us when we make decisions about land usage, when we make decisions about school boundaries, when we make those decisions, the race equity is at play. And so, this group is looking at, talking about having that lens when you make decisions. And so, the present, that's why it was important for the presentation to go both to the Board of Supervisors and the school board to have that dialogue.
And so, what will come from that is the Board of Supervisors had their presentation and what they determined is that, yes, they see the merits of a joint working session between the school board and the Board of Supervisors to really talk about, do we want a county-wide intentional policy that addresses race equity? And so, we're, it's now our job as a board to have the presentation and then determine if we agree that we want to take that next step, correct? Is that how you recall it, Jessie? Okay. Are there any other questions that people would like to ask before we move on to the next work session? Ms. Evans?
So, the, just to be clear, the, the work session we're having next month is just on the racial equity or is it on all of-
It's on Opportunity Neighborhoods.
Just race equity. The Opportunity Neighborhood hasn't gone to SKIPPED yet. It will this year.
Oh. Okay. So, my misunderstanding. And this is something that we have, like the SKIPPED committee, this is, you know, I have talked to them. I've talked to Kathy Hudgens, who's also on it. And the Board of Supervisors had a presentation. They have not, am I correct, Ms. Hines? They have not gone beyond the presentation stage. And I don't know if there was much dialogue. Jessie, you might be able to tell us-
Yeah.
-where they, where they are specifically on this.
That's correct. They had the, the presentation, which outlines the basic, I guess, the fundamentals of what we're talking about here and kind of the steps towards moving, towards adopting, and Ms. Hines, you, you said it perfectly, that, that race equity lens in making decisions. So, what they are hopeful for and what's been recommended to and then by the SKIPPED has been, is as kind of the next step and a joint show of leadership from the, the schools and the county government would be joint resolutions adopting, formally stating that, yes, we are, we want to adopt this race equity lens. We're committed to, to using this in our decision-making. And so, there actually being, you know, at the same time, a resolution from the Board of Supervisors and one from the school board. And that would be kind of the next formal step. But they'll also be talking about in the presentation, the other pieces that are happening at, at staff levels and other things that will need to happen at leadership levels to make, to make it really happen.
I do think it would be my impression that this would be an informational session. This would not be an action item session, that this would be, that's what the December meeting would be here at, at this work session. It would be informational and then we could move forward at that point.
That's what the Board of Supervisors had was at the Health and Human Services. They were all there and they had an informational session so that then they could go back and talk about-
Yes. And that was, that was my intent to work, just as they did, to have that information. And then, we can digest it and decide how to move forward if we need a joint meeting or what we need. But there would be no action. It would be another information session on that particular issue from the, one, one aspect of the broader presentation today to have that.
But this is why I'd ask Jessie to clarify, you know, Mary Ann, you've been there too, and Kim. But it was my understanding that the SKIPPED, when we voted, the, the request was that we were going to bring this to the two boards with the request that the two boards would come together and meet at a work session to decide if they had that, that joint desire to issue a resolution. And it wouldn't be the two separate boards working separately down a path and if you ended up-
That's not what I said. I just said there would be an information session next month.
Right.
And that, and then at that point, the way that I would see this going forward is that I would talk to the chair and then we could, the chair of the Board of Supervisors, and then we could move forward to see what her desire is and what our board's desire is to, after we hear the presentation, because we've got to hear it from all of you.
I completely agree, Ms. Kofax. What I wanted Jessie to clarify is, it was my understanding that they didn't just get an informational presentation. It was, it was made clear to them that the desire was to bring the two boards together and have this discussion, correct? It wasn't just information only and then walk away. It was, we're bringing this to you because we'd like for you to agree to the two boards meeting together. And I, it was communicated to me anyway that they had said, yes, we see the merits of this and, and, you know, we would, the board members said, whether Chairman Bolivum came away with any decision on our own, but that they voiced support in saying, you know, we can see going forward with this work. So, is, I mean, Jessie, were you there? Did they say, we support working with the school board on this?
Yes. But, but just to be, and I don't know if we're getting into technicalities, but the, but at the, at the Human Services Committee meetings, it's not a decision-making, they're not meeting as a decision-making body. So, it is, it is, for things that actually happen, we'll need to take place in those conversations and, and in formal board actions, so.
So, if it was in their Human Services Subcommittee, so where are they on, from the Board Supervisor's side, of taking it to their full board to decide if they want to go any further with race equity?
Right. And so, they-
Do we know when that's going, timeline-wise, when that'll happen?
And that's what they, that's what they want to coordinate with you. Because again, that next step, that next step would be, would be the, the joint resolutions, which they'll need to, and I don't know exactly what the process would, is, but they'll, they need to, Corden, you need to hear the, the, as a board, need to hear the presentation. Decide if this is a, a way that you want to move forward and, and have that discussion with them so that, so that can be coordinated.
Mrs. McElveen, may I suggest that we wait until next work session, in next month. And then, meanwhile, have our chair get in touch with Chairman of Board of Supervisors to see where things are on their side.
I, I would recommend that because I'm concerned that, having worked on this and sat in those meetings, I know that it was requested that, in terms of the steps, it would be that we had a race equity presentation separately as boards and decide whether we wanted to work together going forward, but that it would go through a joint work session, not just that we would continue to do our own individual works. So, I, I think, I support that.
Yes.
I support that because it surprises me.
That's what I had said, Mr. Moon. Thank you for clarifying again. Appreciate it.
Now, if you recall, we were still on my questions.
There you go, Ms. Evans.
So, the reason I ask that is because I see that there are, and by the way, thank you all for doing all this wonderful work. You know, it's terrific and there are, you know, so many, so many robust pieces to this too. But I see that there are some things that apparently are going into effect, so we don't need to act on that. For example, the new youth suicide review team, is that, it says it's beginning its work this fall. Does that mean that, that there's, there's nothing that this board needs to do for that to move forward? It's just going to be moving forward at the county level, is that right?
And Jessie is leading that, so you have the perfect person here.
Oh, that's, that's great. Well, I'm, I'm glad that's moving forward.
I did that way.
So, I, I won't take up any more time, but I, you know, I do want to thank you all for your work because there are just so many important things involved here.
And I did just want to quickly address, you asked the question about hearing about the broader number of things that are going on. I think the attempt would be then to bring those things to you as, just include that as your updates as you have monthly updates. But we wanted to give you the foundational information today.
Okay. That's wonderful.
Yeah. Thank you. Just briefly, I also wanted to thank you all for all that you've been doing on this. And, you know, I think we all want these problems to be solved 100 years ago, right? I mean, we're all in a hurry to get this fixed. But I do think it's important for us to take a little time since this is the first time we're even hearing about it. And we want to make sure that we're going at a pace that we feel comfortable with. So, I also like the idea of having Ms. Darnett Kofax talk to the, to chair to see how we can move forward together in, in a way that, that makes us, you know, feel comfortable. And so, thank you all very much.
Ms. Strauss, do you have a go-back?
Just a very quick one because I know when we began talking about how to, how to make sure that all of our children and families have all the services and the help that they need because that's really what we're trying to do. And I know Jessie, when we began, sort of the initial conversations on the school side, we collect tremendous amount of data by subgroups, by, by race, by ESOL, by, because we have to. And so, we have all those measures. We have all that rich data. And it's my understanding from the county side, from their human services side in particular, they collect data differently. And part of what they are looking for is a way to be able to track services using a richer data set so that they can evaluate, and they can evaluate together the effectiveness of many of the programs that we are, that we are doing now, correct?
Yes. That, that is correct. And we're, that's been a major goal of, of the counties for a long time.
Right. Exactly.
And, you know, and, and they're continuing to work on that. And if I can address too, and earlier when you mentioned not having seen the, the court stats-
Right.
-one of the upcoming pieces, when Dr. Dockery mentioned moving towards, you know, working with the Strive Together and trying to move ourselves a little bit forward in terms of this collective impact type of approach, one of the things that we're going to be doing is refining what are some shared community-level goals for children and youth and what are the indicators of success on those. So, we hope to be able to take all of the data that you have, all of the data that we have, and put together a comprehensive and ongoing picture of children and youth in Fairfax so that, so we can see where we are, where our needs are and measure our success.
And I guess in a little tiny question, are you going to have to change some of your technology in order to collect some of the data that you're hoping to collect? Because we already do it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Schultz, you had a quick question?
I do. I just have a quick question. So, are, is the, is the new community effort drawing from, and is the basis of some of the decisions, the youth survey?
I would say that it's a combination of data. It is also the, just, what's the disproportionality study called? The institutional analysis that was done about the juveniles in our court system. And that report combined with our other data systems.
I'm going to, I'm going to make this, and this has been an annual plea of mine for us to reevaluate. And I've talked to Dr. Presidio about what we ask in the youth survey and to be a lot more focused. I don't think we need to be asking families how many times a week your family eats carrots and whether you recycle. I mean, we, we've lost our perspective on the youth county survey. Let's boil it down to get to important questions because those are the questions that kids have told me, make them not take it seriously. So, let's not ask about carrots and recycling and let's be focused so that we take that so that once again, we're getting back to the meaningful data that helps both the county side and our side provide services where they're needed rather than trying to sift through data for the sake, for data's sake.
And I think we're on that pathway because we added questions to the youth survey in order to accomplish some measurement of Goals Two and Three. And as we move into our strategic plan, we know which of those were effective data points and which were not. So, we've already cut back on a good number of those.
Right. Yeah. I'm not advocating more questions. I'm actually advocating a lot.
No, that's what I'm saying. We've already removed some of those because they didn't give, give us the long-term indicators that we needed.
Ms. Reed, you had a quick question?
Just a very quick comment. Thank you very much for this overall briefing. Those of us that haven't followed your work very closely for this committee, I think I can say that it's very impressive and you're, you're doing a lot of good work. So, thank you for that. I just wanted to let my colleagues know that on Monday night, we're having a budget work session. And as part of that, we'll be reviewing the, some of the findings of the Joint Budget Development Committee. And one of those I'll just highlight is to evaluate opportunities to provide services jointly, including Head Start, SAC, SKIPPED. So, so the context here is that we will be looking at opportunities to collaborate with the Board of Supervisors. And you'll find that in the document when you prepare for Monday evening's meeting.
Great. And with that, we want to turn it over to the next part of the work session, which is with PE, the Public Engagement. Ms. Schultz?
Right.
Oh, then I guess we, right. Two-minute break?
Two-minute break.
... you know, cut back there, so it's like everybody else, but then we're back to, if it's still an issue, so what's the Strive Together?